All right. We're gonna go ahead and get started this evening. I appreciate everyone attending this evening. We've had an exciting week here for our school district. We're gonna get started. We've had, we had elections this past week. As you all know, we had three members who were reelected to our board, two of whom that we're gonna have sworn in tonight by the Honorable Dan Hall, who is here to swear in those members. That is gonna be Scott Childers, our Chair, and Chris Revels, our Vice Chair. Wade Anderson was also reelected. He unfortunately couldn't be with us tonight. We also have Thomas Wilkerson, who was a newly elected board member, who took Diane Howell's seat. Unfortunately, he can't be here, but fortunate for him, he's actually at the hospital having a baby, I believe, or his wife is. I hope he's not having a baby. But at this time, at this time, if we could get the Honorable Dan Hall to come forward. And, y'all wanna do it first? Who wants to go?
Yeah.
Y'all want me to flip a coin?
Yep.
We'll have Chris Revels come forward.
Let me just say this before we get started. I did bring my robe. I think that these are, anytime an individual is sworn in a public office, especially as a school trustee, it is an important position.
Yes, it is.
It's not to be taken lightly. It's a very serious time for, for Revels. And he's been through this a hundred thousand, four, four years.
Wow.
However, it's important that we all understand this isn't just a, an election to, something that doesn't matter. The school board trustees are extremely important. I was just thinking this afternoon, I've been in, I'm holding court in Union this week, and I've been a circuit judge for about ten years, which means I have probably, in ten years, probably been sentenced about 10,000 people.
Geez, that's...
Probably about a hundred a month, or one year, 1,200, let's just say a thousand. And I would say that, if I asked everybody that appears in front of me, how far do you go, how old are you, how far do you go to school? And, and some other questions. But I would say ninety percent of the individuals that come in front of me probably get their attempt for no more than eleven grade education. I'm sure y'all understand that, eleven grade to be in school in the Holyoke competition. However, it's not necessarily the schools' fault. There's lots of issues, there are usually a lot of issues, but it just reiterates the importance of education as the school district, and what they do is extremely important. I'm also privileged to be here. I think I said this the last time I swore, school board. And I graduated from York High School fifty-two years ago. Mr. Floyd Johnson was my AS teacher for four years. And, and the education I got in this school district has been very important and pivotal to me in my life, and I deeply appreciate that. So, York School District's done a wonderful job. My four children graduated from York High School, and I'm thankful for the work of the school board. So with that, I'm swearing this, Revels. I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
...that I am duly qualified...
That I am duly qualified...
...according to the Constitution of this state...
According to the Constitution of this state...
...to exercise the duties of the office...
To exercise the duties of the office...
...to which I have been elected.
Which I have been elected.
And that I will...
And I will...
...to the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability...
...discharge the duties thereof...
Discharge the duties thereof...
...and preserve...
And preserve...
Protect...
Protect...
...and defend...
And defend...
...the Constitution of this state...
The Constitution of this state...
...and of the United States...
And of the United States.
...so help me God. Congratulations.
All right, and next we have Scott Childers.
Let's make a left hand on Bible, raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
...that I am duly qualified...
That I am duly qualified...
...according to the Constitution of this state...
According to the Constitution of this state...
...to exercise the duties of the office...
To exercise the duties of the office...
...to which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will...
And that I will...
...to the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability...
...discharge the duties thereof...
Discharge the duties thereof...
...and preserve...
And preserve...
Protect...
Protect...
...and defend the Constitution of this state...
And defend the Constitution of this state...
...and of the United States...
And of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I want to remind everybody, that is a serious oath. You, you sort of think about it, every, every office holder in this state takes the same oath, whether you're the Supreme Court, Chief of the Supreme Court in South Carolina, whether you're a circuit judge, whether you're a school board member, whether you're a magistrate. And you might ask, I was thinking about, when you drive it back for Virginia, I love that look out there. I was also thinking about how you take an oath to uphold the Constitution. Then once the Constitution got through the school board, it has everything to do with the school board. Because the school board, we've been powered with the authority to promulgate rules and regulations over people's lives. And that's extremely important. And we have a document in this country that we hope will contain that and the urges that we have as human beings to reach beyond whatever position we're in. And the Constitution is a, is a document that applies to school board members as well. So with that, what a great country we live in, what a great system of government we have, what a great Constitution we have. And we're certain of benefit from all of that. With that, congratulations from New School Board members.
Thank you, Judge Hall. So we now call the meeting to order for the general session. If I could have, for invocation, Pastor Brad Hanky, Liberty Church, come forward.
Let's pray. Father, we come today, Lord, and we're just so thankful for everything that you've done for us, Lord. God, tonight, I'm thankful for this school district and everybody that has a part in it, everybody that has a hand in it, Lord. The staff, the, the teachers, the principals, the, the leadership, the board, everybody that's got a part in it, Lord, I'm thankful for them tonight. And Father, I pray that you will bless their lives, bless their efforts, bless their work. God, I'm thankful for the kids that are part of this district, Lord. I pray that you will bless them as they go throughout the, the remainder of the school year, Lord, and that you'll bless their, their studies, Lord, and help them to achieve the goals that they have. God, tonight, I pray that you will just be with this meeting, Lord. I pray that you will bless it, have your, have your hand of guidance upon it, Lord, and I pray that in everything that we do tonight, well, you'll receive honor and glory for it. And we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. You'll please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record reflect, we do have a quorum with two members absent, Mr. Anderson, Mr. Wilkerson. Do you have confirmation and notice the media, are any, any members of the media present this evening? I see no members of the media present. We don't have anybody here to speak tonight for the public forum session. Now move to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval for the consent agenda?
Some move for adoption.
I have a motion by Ms. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Revels. Any need for discussion? Others in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. We'll now have our recognitions. Ms. Lisa Spangler, Coordinator of Special Projects. We'll also have Mr. Revels assisting with recognitions.
Good evening. I'd first like to invite Ms. Amy Hager to come up with Ms. Cox. And tonight, we'd like to recognize our community partners who were members of the York, or Yes for York Schools Committee. On behalf of York School District One and the entire community, we would like to extend our heartfelt gratitude to the dedicated members of the Yes for York Schools for their tireless efforts in working to pass the recent referendum. Your commitment, your hard work, and unwavering dedication will make a significant impact, and we are deeply appreciative, appreciative of your contributions. Please come forward as I call your name. Ronnie Vail. Julie Schillingmeyer, who chaired the committee. Tom Falkenberry. James Love. Phyllis Ward. Holly Starnes. Laura Brooks. Chris Stevenson. And Tim Cooper, who was ex officio. Let's give this group a round of applause.
Ms. Spangler, just before you continue, I would like, from the board, just to, again, thank those folks on that committee for everything they did. And with the bond passing, very important to this community and our district. Just wanted to reiterate that from the board.
Thank you, Chair. Now I'd like to invite forward Dr. Lee Green, who's the Director of Floyd Johnson Technology Center, Ms. Shannon Clinton, who's Assistant Director, Ms. Shelley Copeland, who's the Career Specialist, and any members of York School District One Education Foundation. So tonight, we'd like to thank Mr. Barry Duncan and Ms. Hannah Smith of York County Natural Gas. York School District One would like to recognize and extend our heartfelt gratitude to York County Natural Gas for their generous donation of $10,000 in support of our educational initiatives. Of this donation, $3,000 has been designated for the York School District One Education Foundation, bolstering their ongoing efforts to support district-wide programs and resources. The remaining $7,000 is earmarked for workforce development, specifically targeting Dr. Lee Green and his team's efforts to create a marketing campaign that will engage, engage and encourage minority and underrepresented populations to participate in career and technology education classes. This partnership exemplifies York County Natural Gas's commitment to empowering our community and preparing students for a successful future. Mr. Duncan and Ms. Smith, please come forward. And now for our student recognitions. I'd like to invite forward Dr. John Tharp, who's Principal at York Comprehensive High School. And Ms. Lizzie Elliott, who's the York, York Comprehensive High School Choir Choir Director. And tonight, we recognize Megan Brewer. The American Choral Directors Association hosts a national honor choir every two years. This year, over 6,000 hopefuls from across the United States auditioned for a coveted spot. For the first time in York Comprehensive High School history, I said the first time in the school's history, one of our students will represent our district in South Carolina at this prestigious event. This is a tremendous honor, Megan, and we're so proud of you and your comprehensive high school. Congratulations. And we'd also like to recognize the 2025 South Carolina ACDA Honor Choir. Nearly 1,000 students from across South Carolina auditioned for the 2025 SCACDA Honor Choir. York Comprehensive High School has now turned out to have eighteen of our students.
It's nineteen now, there was a scoring error.
Nineteen. So let me be corrected. Nineteen of its students have been selected to join the choir. That's impressive. These talented individuals will travel to Florence in January to participate in this event. Please congratulate the following students. And since they're nineteen, we'll applaud at the end, okay? Megan Brewer.
Come on back.
Warren Karns. Will Gilfman. Ricardo Gobia Mendoza. Mallory Horn. Kylie Hudgens. Maggie Hollander. Savannah Honeycutt. DJ Johnson. Louis Baralas. Molly Lindell. Micah Mobley. Zakaya Robinson. Ian Roder. Vanessa Santos Neba. Harper Wade. Alex Wallace. JD Waxman. And Charlie White. Now let's applaud, applaud this professor. And we're gonna move from swim, from singing to swimming. And invite Chris Thompson, who's the coach at York Comprehensive High School. For the swimming, come forward. And tonight, we'd like to congratulate the following students who placed at the 4A swimming, the state 4A swimming. Ava Hoist, who placed second in the 200 individual IM. Second place in the 100 breast. Twelfth place in the 200 medley relay. And twelfth place in the 200 free relay. Addie Branch, who placed eighteenth in the 200 free. Twenty-second in the 100 fly. Twelfth in the 200 medley relay. And twelfth in the 200 free relay. Kayla Thompson, who placed twelfth in the 200 medley relay and twelfth in the 200 free relay. Claire Gilfman, who placed twelfth in the 200 medley relay. Caroline Mitchell, who placed twelfth in the 200 free relay. Justin Haney, who placed thirteenth in the 200 free. Thirteenth in the 100 free. Twelfth in the 200 free relay. And tenth in the 400 free relay. Wyatt Branch, who placed nineteenth in the 200 free. Eleventh in the 500 free. Twelfth in the 200 free relay. And tenth in the 400 free relay. Connor Evans, who placed eighteenth in the 200 free. Twenty-third in the 100 breast. Twelfth in the 200 free relay. And tenth in the 400 free relay. Will Gilfman, who placed twelfth in the 200 free relay. And Chandler Evans, who placed tenth in the 400th free relay. Congratulations. We'd like to invite forward Matt Glenn. He's the coach of the golf, golf team at York Comprehensive High School. Doc, Doc, come on back. So tonight, we'd like to congratulate the following golfers who participated in the 4A Upper State and Golf State Tournament. Callie Lawton, who finished 4A Upper State Champion in golf. And Rasmun Desmukes, who was a 4A State Golf Tournament contestant as well. Congratulations. Now I'd like to invite Ms. Megan Hoyt, who's the Principal of Cottonville Elementary, come forward, please. And tonight, she's gonna represent Ms. Rita Woodley, who has been awarded a grant from Duke Energy Science Grant, which will be supplying the necessary materials for 200 students and parents to engage in ten exciting STEM activities at an upcoming family night event. Ms. Woodley cannot be with us tonight. So let's congratulate her. Thank you all for being here.
I'm sure many of you would love to spend this evening with us, and I'm sure some of you would like to go home. So this might be the appropriate time for you to leave, if needed. Well, some of them won't leave. Now that everybody left, and we turned the air on, we'll get back to starting. Next up, we'll have Mr. Brian Greason, Director of Special Services, for Special Services update.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Childers, all members, and Assistant Attorney Cox. It's my pleasure to give you some updates from special services. As we look at serving our students with disabilities, I want to read some numbers and some trends. We're gonna start at a national, but the number of students who receive special education services through the IDA that this was taken in 2022, 23 school year is approximately 7.5 billion students. So that's equivalent of fifteen percent of all public school students across America. Among those students receiving these services, the largest category is the specific learning disabilities, which is at thirty-two percent. And this percentage varies greatly by state. You can see there that the percentage is as low as 11.7% in Hawaii and 21.1% in Pennsylvania. Again, nationally, as we look at the past years, the past ten years, the trend is definitely moving upward. You can see there that we have moved in the last decade from 12.9% of the population being students identified with disabilities to fifteen, 2.2%. The largest, one of the largest categories growing right now is autism. Children with autism, it has moved from 7.8% to 13%. So that's quite an increase in ten years. So when we move from the national to the state, where are we in the state of South Carolina? Twenty-one, twenty-two, we're at fourteen percent. Inched up just a bit in twenty-two, twenty-three at 14.2%. The State Department will continue to collect that data and share that with us at the local level. My guess is it's just gonna continue to go up. Okay, looking at trends regionally, just to see where we are here in York School District One and some of our regional districts. York School District One, we're right now at 20.6%. Clover, York School District Two, 11.7. Lock Hill District Three is at eighteen. Fort Mill District Four is at twelve percent. Chester County is at fifteen percent. Cherokee County at thirteen percent. And Lancaster is sixteen percent. So again, just kind of sharing with you some of the regional numbers. Okay, looking at our district here, and looking at the last four years, it looks like quite an increase over the years in our child count. Every year at the end of October, we report to the state exactly how many students we have being served in special education. But that's actually only an increase of thirty-seven students. You can see we're still having a general rise there here in York School District One. So that just kind of looks at our population growth of students with disabilities. Transfers continue to get a lot of families moving in, a lot of students with IEPs that are served in special education. You'll see there, for whatever reason, twenty-two, twenty-three was our big year. We had 212 students moving into the district that needed special education services. Twenty-three, twenty-four is at 153. Currently, it's at eighty-two. And I can tell you, that slide was done a week or so ago. It's already changing. We still have students moving in, and of course, a lot of those are being served through our programs. So that's kind of where we are with transfers. When we look at the number of students... When we look at the number of students that transferred in, and then those are identified. If they're identified here, we go through the child find evaluation process, and they have their initial evaluation. And you can see in the last two years, again, we're above the number of coming in as transfers versus the number of students that we identify. A little bit of a difference there. So we're not identifying within the district through child find as many students in this last two years as they have actually moved into the district as a transfer student. And that's just a snapshot of our students with disabilities, the numbers. You can see of specific learning disabilities, right there with the national, it's the highest of 395. Autism again at 85, and that's just the various categories there. But just to give you a snapshot of the different categories that we serve in the district. Okay, switching from the statistics of how many were served, and we're going to look at our performance. Each year, we get from the State Department, our current LEA determination profile report. It's kind of like a special education report card that we get annually. Now, this data is looking from 21-22 to the 22-23 school year. So it does run behind. Kind of questioning them and asking them about that, but at this point, that's how they collect the data and get it to us. The first area of compliance, we do very well there. We get our annual reviews done on time, our evaluations done in the 60-day timeline. We turn in data reports that have to be accurate on time. All the compliance area, we did a good check, and we did that again this year. In eighth grade DLA in math, we met the state target, and that's based on the South Carolina Ready Scores. Students with disabilities and suspensions, we also met the state target there. So we're not over suspending students with disabilities. And then staffing, we're doing a good job right now, and all of our umbrella special services with staffing, we're in good shape. With teachers, with assistants, and with related services folks. One of the things I think I mentioned last year, as we're working with paid professionals through South Carolina, creating teachers of tomorrow, we're growing our own here. We've got three or four now that are getting very close to becoming licensed as teachers. They've served in our classes for years. They've got the experience, they've got, they're doing a great job in the classroom. They just need to become licensed as especially a teacher. And I think looking down the road, that's going to help us to continue to be strong. So we're really excited to be able to support those paraplegics who are going to become specialty teachers. Continue to address some areas of growth. Fourth grade DLA in math, we did not meet the state performance, but we did improve from the previous year. And then in career readiness, we did not meet the state performance and did not improve. One of the things that we put in place through a grant through the state-level vocational rehab, we've hired two staff part-time that are former specialty teachers with us. That spend a lot of time working individually in the small groups with some of our students at the high school and dealing directly with career readiness. That and getting us curriculum, those type of things, we're really hoping that's going to improve for the following report card that we get. Okay, and then looking at progress on IEP goals, the Individual Education Plan. Students mastering their goals and moving on to more challenging goals is always a priority. And looking at progress monitoring and how we do that, in May of '24, we just took a snapshot in the system. And what it shows is that 76% were making progress in their goals. And that's a very healthy number in my opinion, and that's what I'm real pleased with that. The 13% that they have not mastered, some of those goals haven't even been introduced by the teacher yet. And then you see the 11% of new goals measured. You don't want too many goals being measured that haven't started yet, and you want to make sure there's a balance there. And so that 11% of those goals that's mastered, what we want to do is move them off the IEP at annual review or special review and put in those more challenging goals as students make progress. That IEP is a very fluid document, and we've put a lot of emphasis in that. So again, 76% in that snapshot, we were real pleased with that. Okay, speaking of progress monitoring and looking at goals and how our students are doing, last year, we introduced ClassWorks for our teachers, and that's a progress monitoring tool. And what we found that from the fall to the spring of last year, this was the first year of implementation of ClassWorks, 34% in DLA of our students moved up to suggested tier. And then 54% showed overall growth. And then in math, we had 44% moved up to suggested tier, and then 47% showed overall growth. So again, that's a snapshot of the first year. Anytime you go into the second year, we're expecting even more results. And we also purchased the instructional piece of ClassWorks, and our teachers were really responding to that. What specific skills and things that they're behind doing, and they target, if it's an academic support 1 class or academic support 2 class, of where they're getting their services. And so we have to continue with ClassWorks and do that and continue to grow as our students are making progress. And lastly, we'll talk about our biggest challenge right now. It is our new IEP and data management program. Some of you may have heard as you're out and about, and if you see some of our special education teachers and some of our folks, the grimace on a gentleman's face, you may see that. The state reused Frontline and Bridge for 10 years, and the state obviously puts it up for bid every five years and they review it. Well, they went for PCG, and it went live for use and ready to go on July 11th this summer. And the best way I can fit it is, they said it was ready for use, but we're having a lot of technical issues with it. Not from our end, but from their end. We have two meetings a month, office hours that our office meets, and we get that information to our teachers. We're putting the help desk tickets, we're doing everything we can, but I'll admit, our teachers are struggling right now with IEPs, but it's getting better. They're addressing these issues, we're just trying to give them a lot of support. Because of that and IEPs, it's important, but it's also a very common concern. So anyway, that's one of our biggest challenges now, but we're going to get through it. And the state's very aware from many districts feedback that this has been a difficult process for the district. Do you have any questions?
May I have any questions or comments from Mr. Greason? I think it was good information. It's definitely stuff that, you know, we ask about and think about, and we don't, you know, we don't see it, don't know it. So apparently appreciate your present information.
I will share one other thing, just appreciation to this board. You know, a lot of folks think in special services, you give these millions of dollars through the IDA grant. And the IDA grant for the services and the staff we provide is a fraction of what we obviously have to spend. So I appreciate the board and that priority. And we also even actually got a decrease for the first time in many years in our IDA grant. It was significant, I mean, it wasn't too bad, but it was significant. So again, we're giving that feedback to the state and the federal about that. We have these programs, and we need the money, but I do appreciate the support of this board and the general fund and thanks that we do to support these programs and the state's support.
Thank you, Mr. Greason. And now I have Connected Conference. Dr. Dixon. And Mr. Fritter.
I'm simply here at Melissa Cox's behalf, she could be with us tonight. She's here to introduce Mr. David Fritter, our current teacher advisory chair, who's going to talk to you about our Connected Conference that was held on October 14th.
Thank you. Good evening Chairman Childers, Superintendent Cox, and members of the board. Tonight, I have the privilege of presenting the summary of our recent Connected Conference. And the main idea behind our Connected Conference is tying together our strategic agenda. And you see that there, and there's a lot of things that we focus on, collaborative environment, student-centered learning, and creative student work. You tie those three together, and then what we do is we have this Connected Conference, and we take that strategic agenda, and we see how we can leverage our best teaching practices through several of our educators. And what's great is it's educators teaching other educators. So it's a comfortable environment, and so they are, they're more apt to listen, and they are teaching similar students in the environment. As you can see, we have it broken out really well. First, you have the registration, you come in like a real conference. And then we have four sessions, but they're broken up in the middle with a keynote speaker, as well as a lunching. And what's nice about the lunching, which was sponsored by Chartwells, is it's box lunches, so people don't have to necessarily sit in the cafeteria, they can go outside. It was a beautiful day. They can go outside, they can sit at the tables, they can discuss what they learned at the conference. Oh, I went to this session, oh, this was great. Well, I might want to try that next year. So there was a lot of communication there as well. And so it's laid out to be as efficient as possible, so the teachers are moving on, moving on, moving on, and there's no downtime. Now, when I say it was like a real conference, because it was a real conference. It started out with coffee trucks. And I was there early, I was one of the presenters, and when you smell coffee at 6:00 in the morning, that is an incredible, that is an incredible smell. And what's nice is, the teachers come in, a lot of teachers come in from the different schools, and so it's, they're leaving. And so it feels like a real conference. And they come in, they sign in, they get their little brochures, they see where it's going to happen. And it was a very comfortable environment, so that's why I say it was like, it was a real conference. Let's just take a look at some of these numbers. 66 sessions were offered. 313 teachers participated, and it would have been more. There were some other divisions that had to go to different conferences. Lloyd Johnson had to go to one, the Royal Languages had to go to another, PE guidance. And if those members had been there, those numbers would have gone up. And not only that, I think there were a few that were invited to present, who were invited to share their best practices with others. And so 71 presenters from York School District, nine out of district. We had the University of South Carolina, we had the, we had Winthrop University. Vable came in to present. It was really nice. And look at that, we're going to come back to it, but I'm going to point out a few times, $2,700 local sponsorship and door prizes. That is the community giving back, that is absolutely incredible. And then again, I mentioned lunch sponsored by Chartwells, and they had a variety of sandwiches, they had salads, they had a Mento cheese for the vegetarians, and it was great. And then nine vendor tables for the other teachers to look at. The keynote address speaker worked out well. As I mentioned, four sessions, and he's in the middle. And he was excellent. His name was Barry White Jr., and he went viral, for those who don't know. He would do a different handshake for each of his students. And he made it all the way to the Today Show, everything. He was nationwide, and we were fortunate enough to bring him to our school. But what I really liked about him was he's not only engaging for everyone from the elementary to the high school. He tied into our mission that we had at Convocation Elevate to Excellence. So it was, we started with Elevate to Excellence, he was preaching the same thing, be the best teacher you can, be engaging, connect with our students. It tied into what we were talking about. And that was, that was wonderful. Everybody was laughing, engaging, some people shared their stories. He was an excellent individual, and I think everybody really appreciated him. But here, let me go back to the sessions themselves. Again, these are educators, talk to tell their educators. And what's nice, when you go to other conferences, and I try to go as funny as I can, it's different. Some people, I'm in a very, I'm in the area of Chicago, that may not work here, or I'm in the area of Texas, they may not work here. Here is the teachers with the same students. So hey, this works. Hey, I'm going to try to, and some of it, like classroom management, didn't matter if it was elementary or if it was high school. But some of the best practices work no matter what. And what was great is we had the teachers from the different schools wear their T-shirts that they got from Convocation or shirts. So you could tell who was middle school, who was elementary. Let me go back. You can see, like, for example, I was wearing the white T-shirt. That picture's not going on Facebook. Okay, so, but like the teacher leaders were wearing the white shirts. And so you see, oh, these are part of the Teacher Advisory Council that helps set up the whole thing. So you could see all the different groups. It's not often we get to communicate with the different schools other than Convocation. And this is real nice, because this is interacting with them. So, and it's engaging. You feel comfortable asking questions, you feel comfortable presenting ideas, you feel comfortable being there. So you're getting more out of it than just a regular PD, which is wonderful. And then door prizes. I'm not, when they came in, everybody got a ticket, and there were some wonderful prizes. Plants, beauty care items, tickets, gift certificates to some of the local restaurants. They would announce the names of people who won in between the different sessions, and you would see people, shh, hold on, I want to hear if they called my name. And they were excited, wonderful. Teed dental was the sponsor of our keynote speaker. They gave an electric toothbrush, which had to have been $100. That was extremely nice. So again, this, these are more rewards going to the teachers, showing the appreciation from the community. And let me just look at some of those. Tavern, Black's Peaches, Bush and Vine, here's your South Carolina, and Winthrop University, SCEA. The number of individuals that participated in this was outstanding, and it showed the commitment to the educators in York School District. It goes beyond that also, you know, think, that's all of you. Without the support of the board, without the support of the district office, we really can't do much. We know when you care. And so that means something else. And when we think you don't care, that hurts. So when we see actions, like what you did there, that means a lot, and we really appreciate it. If that's my bell, I have to go. But, no, thank you, I appreciate all of it. And you might, I would ask for questions, and the one thing I'll respond with before questions is, you get out what you put in. And I think everything you just saw, the numbers alone, we did a survey where we had quite a significant response. And one of the last questions, out of one through five, one being the lowest, five being the highest, where do you rank it? And they were honest, let me tell you, most people will fill out a survey when they're upset. We averaged 4.3. And so that says something. So thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
Any question, Mr. Fritter? Comments? Appreciate the information, and good to hear that, you know, this is something positive. Thank you. Now that we have Director of Human Resources, Ms. Jennifer Bowden.
Good evening. I have two action items this evening. First action item is a certified resignation, and this is for resignation and release from 24-25 contract.
So before you, we need a motion to accept the certified resignation or release of 24-25 contract as presented. Just a reminder, under Human Resources, any need for executive session or discussion, we'll need to go into executive session. Is there a motion for acceptance of the certified resignation for 24-25 contract?
We have to accept the resignation.
Have a motion by Mr. Revels, do I have a second? Have a second by Ms. Faulkner, any need for discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries.
His second action item is a certified retirement, and this is for the end of this school. Or actually, sorry. This would be returning to work as a working retiree.
Do I have a motion to accept certified retirement as presented? Motion accepted.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. McSwain, have a second by Ms. Johnson, any need for discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now I have Assistant Superintendent for Academic Innovation and Professional Learning, Dr. Latoya Dixon.
Good evening. The Teacher Advisory Council developed two potential draft calendars for 25-26. At their meeting following that work session, the calendars were shared with all faculty and staff on October 25th. Everyone had the opportunity to review those two calendars and indicate their preference via a survey, which remained open from the 25th through November 4th. The results of the survey were that 76% of respondents preferred calendar A, whereas 24% of respondents preferred calendar B. I bring to you one action item for your approval for first reading, 25-26 Academic Calendar, Version A.
Do I have a motion for adoption of 25-26 Draft A Modified Balance Academic Calendar?
So a move for adoption.
Have a motion, Ms. Johnson, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Revels, any need for discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Dixon. Now Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, Ms. Amy Hagner.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First item is just regarding our food service onsite reviews. As you all know, it's a federal requirement, we have to do this at a minimum one time a year, where we have to go visit all schools, looking at our breakfast and our lunch programs. This whole night started at this month, and we should be done in the next couple of weeks. And this is just part of the process. Every few years, she also has to go through an annual review. So when the State Department comes, they look at these same type items. So we're just trying to stay on top of things before a So we're just trying to stay on top of things before A.R., so I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Hagner? Thank you, Ms. Hagner.
Next, I will give you an ESTER update. We're gonna say goodbye to ESTER tonight. I got two ladies in the audience ready to say goodbye. So as you know, we've received three rounds of ESTER, and on a quarterly basis, I have provided you all updates, whether it be in a work session or in a public meeting. And so this is our final ESTER update, our third round of ESTER. We received eleven, almost eleven point six million dollars. As you know, that expired just recently in September of twenty twenty-four. Just as a refresher, as we've used all the ESTER money, Sherry has to go in at the end of the quarter, she has to make claims on that, so we get reimbursed for the funds as we spend them. We do have forty-five days after the close of the quarter to claim those funds. We have to keep all of our documentation for those. Our external auditors have been, it's one of the funds they have audited for years since we've had ESTER, it's one of the things that they're gonna look at. We have not had a state or a federal monitoring visit yet. It still can happen, even though the funds have expired, they could still come back and look at our ESTER funds or documentation to see how we utilize those funds and make sure we have utilized those currently. So if you look at ESTER three broken out over the years, as like I said, about eleven point six million dollars. So in twenty-one, twenty-two, we spent two point seven, and twenty-two, twenty-three, we spent a little over two point two million, twenty-three, twenty-four, almost four point nine million, and then the August, September quarter of twenty-four, twenty-five, we spent one point seven one. And Ms. Johnson, you can see at the very end of that.
Says zero.
There is a zero balance. So I just wanna take one second to thank Lisa Spangler and Sherry, her name is. They have, I can't tell you the hours that they have put into this. We received over, almost eighteen million dollars in ESTER funds, and we did not send one penny back of eighteen million dollars, that is unbelievable.
Incredible.
And it's, it's due to what they have done, like I said, they have spent countless hours making sure that we spend the money, that we spend it correctly, and if we didn't, we came up with another plan to come out with another way to how to spend it. So I can't thank the two of them enough for what they did for this, I would thank you both very much.
Ms. Hagner, I think it's probably also important to note that a lot of districts around us hired a person to manage ESTER. And these ladies did this as an add-on to their everyday job.
And, yeah, and we're gonna get the money on table. Yeah, I mean, I really can't begin to describe the hours that this.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what Dixon said, now I'm, I'm, I'm needing to know what she said.
I can see many districts left money on the table.
Left, gotcha, thank you.
A lot of districts left money on the table.
Thank you for that.
But it's, I love it, they're finance people, they're very detailed, and you know, we as a district, we don't, we don't send money back, it's not what we do. And so I can't, I mean, we did every dime we had, so when you, when you get eighteen million dollars of funds in this amount of time, that says a lot about what we've done for our, for our children and what we've done for this district, but they know, very much, very appreciative.
Any questions or comments?
Johnson, I know you'd be very excited to hear this report.
I am excited. And I, I also, Mr. Children's would like to say thank you, because I do watch you guys. Whether you know it or not, I, I do watch it, and I was pleased to see zero come up. Because I was scared at one point.
They were too. But I was calming down, like, we've got this ladies, we've got this, this is easy, we got it. Any other questions on anything on ESTER?
I'm glad it's gone.
Me too, they definitely are. All right, next, I'll provide an Agarhina update. Just a kinda, some of this is just a refresher. As you know, we've received about four point two five million from the state over a three-year period. The last count we had that we had raised was a little over fifty-something thousand dollars, so we have four point three million dollars. We're still working within a five point five million dollar budget. As I told you at a previous update, Pratt Circle that ran through the property, we went through the process, it was a county road, that road is now closed, so all that's taken care of. Our steering committee, it's, believe it or not, it's been over a year since our committee has been meeting. Last September was our first meeting, we continue to meet. They have worked really hard when they designed our logo, came with their name. They worked very hard on the sponsorship guide, and so at this point in time, we have kinda turned things over to both of our foundations, York School District run education foundation and the Cloverleaf Foundation. They're our fundraising arms, and so that's what we're working on now. I know our foundation has applied for multiple grants that we're very hopeful that we're gonna get and to be able to add to our four point three million that we have collected. We continue to have a target groundbreaking date of March thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. And a lot of things are going on, I've shown you some renderings in the past, this may be hard for you to see, but just as a refresher, obviously, this is gonna be right across from Hickory Grove Share and Elementary School. Initially, we had the arena where it faced Hickory Grove Road and faced the school, but as we tried to cut down on cost, one of the things we had to do was take advantage of the topo, so we had to rotate it just so slightly. So now it's facing, the front entrance is now facing towards Hickory Grove, the town Hickory Grove and the convenience center. We've also adjusted the front drive, you can see there, it's further down the road from Hickory Grove, the two entrances in Hickory Grove Elementary School. And in doing so, we have received a word from the county and DOT that we will not have to do a traffic impact analysis. That saves a lot of money towards this project. You know, they, they saw this as something that, when this would be in use, it's not gonna impact the traffic between the school and those kind of things, it's gonna be more either at night or weekends. And so that was one thing that saved us a lot of money. So we continue to do things to cut costs. Like I said, we're still trying to work within that five point five million dollar budget. This is a layout of the arena. If you go from the bottom up, you'll walk into a main entrance area. On the left, there'll be restrooms and concessions. On the right will be a meeting space, off the meeting space, you'll see here in another slide, it'll have a nice covered area on the outside. And then as you walk through the front entrance area, the concessions, it'll open up to a walkway, and then you'll walk down into the bleachers, and you'll be overlooking the arena. Kinda like at, like at our football stadium, you're overlooking the stadium there. So then you can see the rink there. On the back, so the bleachers right now, we have seating for fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred seats. On the opposite side, you can see where it says future seating. That's room to expand for another thousand seats there. On the backside, one of the things, as we talked to York County Corps H, is it would be nice as the participants come in for events, they'll come around to the backside of it, and we're gonna have an office area, restrooms, kind of an area for them to check into. So that was one of the things that we've added here recently. Honestly, when it comes down to price, it's probably one of those things we're gonna add on as an alternate, and depending upon price, we may, may or may not be able to do that. So those are kinda some of the things that we've been doing in our steering committee meetings. You all seen the front entrance, you looking at, you know, pre-engineered metal buildings here for the arena and for the, the building that'll house the concessions and the restrooms and the meeting space. It's got our logo and the name on the front. From this slide, you can see to the far right, that meeting space is on the, on the right side of the building, and then you can see the covered area I was referring to earlier off of that meeting space. So we're making, like I said, we're making a lot of progress. Because we turned the building, it was important to us that, as you were riding down Hickory Grove Road, as you were looking at it, it still was very pleasing from the road. So this is a side view across from Hickory Grove Share and Elementary School, this is what it'll look like from the side. We are almost finished with our renderings and the final phases of that. The next thing we'll do is submit information to O.S.F., probably sometime in December, January, to get approval from O.S.F. As you, as you recall, they are treating this like a school facility, so all the things, as we go into our building program with O.S.F., we're having to follow those same rules and regulations with the Agarhina. So we'll seek their approval before we go for a groundbreaking. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Hagner? Thank you. Oh.
I would like to ask a question, do you, I mean, do you anticipate that we will be able to get the cost down closer to the money that we have now? Because if you're working under a five point five million dollar budget, we're still a good one point two.
I hope that we're gonna continue to raise money. We don't, if we get down to four point three, we're gonna have to continue to cut a lot. It could be that we might not finish the kitchen, you know, it may just be empty space. We've already cut down the septic system, even though it can eventually be twenty-five hundred, we've cut it back for fifteen hundred, we've cut our parking back for fifteen hundred. So we're getting closer to where, we cut the restrooms back for fifteen hundred, so we're getting closer to getting some real estimates. So five point five was our budget months and months ago, and now that we've kinda narrowed things down a little bit more, we'll have a true estimate here within the next couple of months.
So you think you can get a lot closer to the four point three we have right now?
I'd hate to say that to us, our new estimates.
What about the parking, have we had any discussions with the county about paving that parking lot, or are they gonna require that?
We have, we, we've received favorable response on that. There'll be some paved parking, but we feel like we'll be able to go back with the gravel and have that variance for labor to not have to pave all of that. They've been very accommodating and very helpful throughout this process. We've had multiple meetings with county manager and those within the planning department, keeping them posted on the project, and so they're, like I said, they've been very supportive.
And we'll be presenting?
Yes, we will eventually be presenting before county and county council here real soon.
Any other questions?
I was just wondering, is pennies for projects a part of this to help out there?
No, they have.
No.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Hagner.
Next is a policy update. Tonight, I bring before you a second reading of the list of policies, and I ask for your approval.
Do I have a motion for approval for second reading for policies K.F.A., K.D.C., K.B.E., I.D., I.K.F., J.I.C.I., J.O.C.D.A., J.L.C.D.B., J.L.C.G., J.B.A.C., I.H.A.A., I.H.C.A., I.K.E., I.L.B., and I.L.B.B. Do I have a motion?
So move for adoption for second reading.
Have a motion by Ms. Johnson for second reading, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Revels, any need for discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. And I would just like to say on that one, you know, a lot of these are items from the state, and I know there are materials that, you know, there's no impact, no fiscal impact, so just for the public.
And my last action item is our resolution declaring the results of the referendum. So it's attached in your board docs, you should have a copy of that resolution, just as a refresher. And at our June board meeting, you all approved a resolution for us to move forward with the referendum to be on the November ballot. Since then, the election has been held, there was a favorable result, sixty-four percent, I believe, in favor of the questions on the ballot. That has now been certified by the York County Board of Voter Registration and Elections. You should have a copy of their certification, and you should have a copy of the last page of that report. And so tonight, I ask for your approval of that. Upon approval, this gets filed with York County Court of Courts Office for final, the final stage of this.
So all of this was in board docs? If anybody had any questions or anything for Ms. Hagner on that before we vote, just out of curiosity. Seems pretty straightforward.
It was pretty straight.
All right, so do I have a motion for approval of the resolution to corollary on the results of the refer, bond referendum? So move. Have a motion by Mr. Revels, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. McSwain, any need for discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Now the work begins.
Thank you, Ms. Hagner. Turn it over to District Superintendent, Ms. Kelly Cox.
Appreciate it, this section is, is mine here, and the first item is the South Carolina School Board Association delegation, and I believe this is one you wanted to speak to.
Yeah, so I know Wade's not here tonight, and I know David and Wade are going. So there are several items in the S.E.S.B.A. list this time. Some of them relate to the E.O.C., and some of them have been in there for a while. So really wanted to just go over with David, or anybody has any questions or anything needed to be conveyed to David and Wade for any voting or anything with S.E.S.B.A. for the delegation conference.
I didn't see anything that I didn't agree with.
Anybody? I think the one thing we, that is still in there is about the E.O.C., and that's just with the state. So I think there'll be a lot of discussion on that one. So, and I will be there, but I won't be able to say anything during that discussion. But if something comes up, we can discuss beforehand, or anybody on the board can discuss beforehand. Just wanna put that out there for you, since you and Wade will be there. And we can catch up with Wade as well, if you can do that, or I can do that. And that's really all I had on those. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item that I have for you are the board elections in December. Just a reminder, along with board policy BD information item, that you will be electing your slate of officers at the December meeting. Just wanted to remind everyone of that.
Thank you.
All right, and then the final item that I have for you are our upcoming dates. And I do wanna just take the liberty, I know it's been said several times tonight, and we did have an opportunity to celebrate in the reception very briefly, but thank you to everyone who helped us communicate the need here within the district so that we were able to be, have a favorable vote for the bond referendum. I think it says a lot that it was eighty-four percent passage rate, particularly in this election. And unfortunately, some of our neighbors were not as fortunate. So I think it speaks very strongly to the amount of support that this community places on education. And just wanted a chance to say thank you to everyone publicly for that, but for those that are in the room here, thank you for your support, particularly that of the Vote Yes for Schools Committee, they did a great job. Our upcoming dates, you can see that are listed here, the one that I would like to draw your attention to is November the twenty-sixth. It is slated as a work session and or called meeting. I would remind you that that is the Tuesday prior to the beginning of the Thanksgiving holiday, and it's up to you whether or not we'd like to meet that night. We are okay not meeting, but if y'all have agenda items, we can certainly meet. We will look for direction from y'all on that. We then will celebrate Thanksgiving holidays and be closed, November twenty-seven to twenty-nine. Reminder of the delegate assembly meeting that we mentioned previously on December sixth through eight, that will be down in Charleston, and then right behind that, the Christmas season begins. We'll have the Hickory Grove Parade on December the seventh, our meeting on December the tenth, and then the York Parade on December the thirteenth, followed very quickly by half-day for students, and then going into our winter holiday, December twenty-third through January third. Reminder for those who are in attendance, January the sixth, we will be returning back. That is a work day for teachers, and it is also an asynchronous e-learning day, meaning teachers will give assignments long before that day, and students will have the time to do it over their holiday or for a week upon their return. We don't anticipate it messing up anyone's winter plans or teachers' plans. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Any questions, Superintendent, or anything on scheduling dates, anything? I guess winter graduation, that, I looked it up, camera, whatever it was, but.
Yeah, it's, it's not until a little bit later.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We did have a need for executive session tonight.
Right. Anything else on open items? If not, do I have a motion to go into executive session for contractual and legal matters per section thirty dash four dash seventy? Do I have a motion?
So move for executive session for contractual and or legal.
Have a motion by Ms. Johnson for executive session, do I have a second? Second by Ms. Faulkner, no need for discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Will now go into executive session. Thank y'all for coming tonight. Come out of executive session? Have motion by Ms. Johnson. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Rebels. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any other business of the board? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some move for adjournment.
Have a motion by Ms. Johnson for adjournment. Do I have a second?